Good evening. Tonight is Monday, February 17th, 2020. It is 7:04 PM and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Nashville Board of Education. Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ziem?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio? Ms. Gilio will not be with us tonight. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Dr. Mosley?
Yep.
Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Ogara? Ms. Ogara, I'm sorry. I don't know why I did that. I apologize. Mr. Gao is here.
Here.
And Mr. Norris is...
Running late, Ms. Robinson.
Running late. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Guarino. If you could please lead us in the prayer and then, Ms. Johnson, if you could lead us in the pledge this evening. If everyone could please stand.
Okay. Just want to note that participation in our prayer is voluntary. Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This evening, we do have a couple of visitors. Mr. Weeks is here from Revision Energy and Doria Brown from the City. You're the City Energy Manager?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I got it right. And Mr. Smith is here. We had them scheduled way down the agenda under New Business, but since everyone is here and they have a presentation, I'd like to change the agenda, or change the rules so that we can hear them first. Do I have any objections to allowing the presentation to go first? Nope. Then by consensus, I think we can go ahead. Let me move so this doesn't hit me in the head. Please go ahead, Mr. Weeks.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be before you. I know your time is precious, so I'll move swiftly through the presentation. My name is Dan Weeks. I'm Director of Market Development at Revision Energy. Also a proud Nashua citizen, live in French Hill on 7 Shattuck Street, and a future Nashville Public Schools parent. We've got three young kids who aren't quite old enough, but looking forward to them being able to partake in the wonderful school system that we are a part of here. So thank you for all you do. I've had the privilege of presenting a few times to the Finance Committee and appreciate very much the diligence that committee has put in, starting last fall. Initially, a few years ago, and in the intervening few years, I've had the chance to spend a fair bit of time with Sean, as well as Dan Donovan, and members of the school district staff to assess the best solar opportunities for Nashville Public Schools. And I'm very pleased this evening to present what we and I think the staff feel are two good opportunities for the School Board to consider, the Board of Education to consider, for 2020, with the possibility of future projects on additional schools of the 17 total. But naturally, we look for those that have roofs that are solar-ready and that meet other qualifying criteria. So glad to present those tonight. By way of a brief introduction, Revision Energy, some of you may be familiar, we're a New Hampshire-based solar company. I'm one of 270 co-owners, 100% employee-owned, and we take pride in the fact that the men and women who install the systems have an equal stake in the company as employee owners. We operate an electrician training program, Revision Energy Technical Center, and are always looking to hire young folks out of high schools, certainly out of community college and college. So aside, goal of ours would be to establish any educational partnerships that the school district found beneficial, particularly with the two high schools. So far, Revision has installed over 8,000 solar energy systems, and we do complementary technologies as well. We've been honored to be ranked number one in New England for rooftop solar the last few years by the main industry publication, number five in the U.S. And a couple of the local projects, some of you may be aware that the City of Nashua has undertaken some ambitious goals around clean energy. We've had hydro dams here in the city for decades that provide a share of the power, but Mayor Donches has made some exciting goals, in my view, around clean energy and efficiency. And Doria Brown from City Hall is a full-time energy manager, advancing various initiatives. And the city, last year, late last year, completed the installation of two city projects at Lake Street Fire Station and the Transit Garage. Also, Conway Ice Arena on city land was completed, and these were under the same financial structure that I'll briefly outline that's being proposed here for the school district. I attend Crossway Christian Church, another recent project, the Nashua Soup Kitchen you're all familiar with, where I volunteer, and other local nonprofit and municipal projects. And I wanted to also just highlight a few other public school projects. Revision has installed several dozen projects for schools of different sizes, public as well as private, across northern New England, and these are a few of the New Hampshire, and a couple main public schools that we've installed in recent years. The largest there in the upper left is Dover High School, which is currently the largest rooftop solar array in the state at almost 1 megawatt. And just a few other nonprofits and commercial clients. But let me dive right in. Two main parts of the proposal, the actual design and engineering that we're proposing for the two schools, and then the financials. And I believe you may have seen these materials already, so I will move through quickly, but feel free to interrupt with any questions you have. We begin the design process by looking at the physical structures via satellite, via onsite inspections of both roofs and electrical infrastructure. And just before going further, I should pause in case Board of Education members are not aware. A major impetus for my being here tonight, the opportunity to be here, is that the City of Nashua undertook an exhaustive RFP process, a competitive selection process, last year for the city facilities. Initially, they had us look at 25 different city facilities. We narrowed it down to 10 that we proposed, and then the first three that could be completed last year. And so, as Doria can perhaps elaborate, the city went through a process of receiving many bids, doing interviews with four finalists, and we were honored to be selected. And so, it was felt that that was reason to explore additional opportunities with the Board of Education, hence these two proposals now. So Dr. Crisp, as some of you know, previously had solar on the roof, one of the early solar arrays in the state. We know that it is structurally sound to support the weight, the 4 to 7 pounds per square foot that would be added. And based on our engineer's design, we can accommodate 357 kilowatts of solar capacity. That's close to 1,000 solar panels. And the annual energy generation is just over 400,000 kilowatt-hours, which is, of course, an important input in the financials, as I'll review in a moment. This is a snapshot of the solar production report. The 12 months of the year, January through December there, are in orange bars. We model much lower winter production, assuming that there's going to be a fair amount of snow cover in the winter when the panels will put out much less power, because they're sitting on the roof, they're not hoisted up high to shed that snow, and that means we don't have to make any penetrations in the roof surface. The roof warranties remain in full effect. So that's the production report, based on 30 years of federal weather data, so we can model very accurately what the panels will produce for power. And the second opportunity that we were requested to investigate by staff at the school district is Fairgrounds Middle School, a larger roof. We know that portions of that, of course, are newer, and we have a lot of confidence they will be structurally sufficient. The original portion, all portions, both schools will go through a full, independent structural review with an independent professional engineer. So no panels will go on and no money will be paid before they have passed structural review. The city would not permit us to install without that review. But we have preliminary information, we do have plans, and so have a high degree of confidence that both schools will meet the structural needs for that additional weight, the 4 to 7 pounds per square foot. And here again is the engineer's rendering for Fairgrounds, total of 650 kilowatts of capacity, generating 765,000 kilowatt-hours annually. And for comparison, I know those are just numbers, but 765,000 kilowatt-hours is a substantial amount of power, enough for several dozen typical New Hampshire homes. And that would offset a little bit more, about 14% more than the total annual energy consumption at Fairgrounds, so there would be some additional revenue which could offset other electricity expenses. And if we go back to Dr. Crisp, that would in fact generate almost twice the energy requirements, the energy load of Dr. Crisp Elementary. So another opportunity to offset another middle school in the process, using the roof that we know to be solar-ready. The production report for Fairgrounds. And then, just to give you a quick idea of what this looks like when fully installed, again, the panels simply sit on the roof membrane, no mechanical attachments or penetrations. The cinder blocks you see are added weight to meet the wind load requirements, so that we know there's no chance of uplift and the panels being blown off the roof. And should the school in future, and it stands to reason that in the coming decades, the school will need to service the rooftop units, the HVAC equipment, should they need to remove some panels or even patch a section of the roof, that's very doable, because the panels can simply be lifted off. That said, we do look for new roofs. These are both less than two years old, and that is a good reason to proceed with solar and perhaps wait until other school roofs are replaced to consider solar on those roofs. So that, there's a very, very small chance you would need to remove the panels, and the warranties will remain in effect. The other major component besides the panels are the solar inverters. We think of these as the brains of the operation, converting that raw DC or direct current power into alternating current, and that's fed right into the building electrical panel. In the upper left, you see an example of a main distribution panel. We've gotten to inspect the panels in both facilities. They have sufficient service to accommodate the incoming power, even though it would generate more than the schools use annually. Excess power, particularly in summer, when the panels put out the most power and the schools have relatively lower consumption, excess power will be sent out over the existing poles and wires and literally power the neighborhood. Those electrons will go to where the next nearest load center is. The schools will maintain their existing grid connections, so that on a snowy or rainy day or at night, they have the same unlimited quantity of power that they should need at that time. But when the panels are overproducing, a credit is given to the school, a monetary credit for every excess kilowatt-hour, and that removes other charges on your electric bill, or a surplus at the end of the month is then transferred and carried forward to the next month, which means in practice that surpluses in the summer months will offset costs in the fall and winter months. And we can show you what the specific analysis looks like. And it's the job of the inverters to perfectly match the frequency and voltage of the incoming grid power, so from an operational standpoint, the school will not notice any difference whatsoever. The lights won't flicker, there will be no interruptions in power unless the grid goes down, in which case the inverters are required to discontinue sending power from the panels, so as not to backfeed and potentially cause damage to those servicing the distribution network in the event of a power outage. Fortunately, that's quite rare in Nashua. Major components, I can go in more detail if you'd like. On the panels, the inverters, panels do come with a 25-year warranty, the inverters with a 12-year warranty, the other major equipment, significant warranties as well, and a commercial lifespan of quite a bit longer than that. The panels and the inverters, sample construction timeline, which I can get into. Part of the reason, I believe, that the Finance Committee wanted to turn this around and bring it to the full board this week after the meeting last week, was that if it's the goal of the school district to install on one or both of these schools this summer, while students are, of course, on summer vacation, it would be necessary, there's a number of steps that are required with the utility, with local permitting, it would be necessary for the school district to move forward in the coming weeks and ultimately enter a contract in the month of March in order to ensure a summer installation. If that's not possible, we are accustomed to installing, even when schools are in session, we install on busy manufacturing facilities, retail facilities, so we would certainly work around whatever conditions you gave us. And then finally, just a quick kind of breakdown of how this, how the excess power would be distributed over the course of 12 months. The yellow bars there are the solar generation, so less in winter, when we're assuming snow cover for a good portion of the winter months, more, of course, in summer. And in summer, you'd carry those bill credits to offset the winter charges. If you have an excess at the end of an annual cycle, in April, the utility would write you a check for that excess electricity value. And let me move right in then to the solar financials for a brief overview of the way in which we are proposing to finance this, which is the way that virtually every school project, certainly every public school project, has been financed the way the City of Nashua and every other municipality we've worked with has financed their projects. The mechanism is called a Power Purchase Agreement, or PPA. The basic logic behind the PPA is that, in their wisdom, the Congress has chosen to direct what incentives exist for solar through the tax code, meaning if you pay an income tax bill to the IRS, you can reduce your tax liability by a portion of the cost of the solar project. That works well for homeowners or for businesses that pay taxes, but for a tax-exempt entity and 501(c)(3) nonprofit or a municipal entity, you have no ability to access those tax incentives. The solution, which was actually developed by the federal government at the National Renewable Energy Labs, is called the PPA or Power Purchase Agreement. It's been blessed by the IRS, has been used many thousands of times around the United States and more than 150 times by Revision Energy. And essentially, what that entails is that the City of Nashua, Nashville Public Schools, would license the use of the roof on one or both of these schools for the installation of the proposed solar array. They would agree to purchase the kilowatt-hours generated by the array, not some theoretical model or projection of what power will be generated, but the actual kilowatt-hours delivered by the panels to the school's electrical facility or excess to the grid that are then paid as revenue to the school. And then, after five years, you would have the option, never a requirement, but an option each year, beginning in year six, to purchase the system, the panels, the inverters, all the equipment, from that investor partner. And from that point forward, generate your own power, which means much more rapid savings would accumulate to the district. Your partner in this would be a local impact investor, and we were very fortunate that Worthen Industries, based here in Nashua, was the impact investor partner for the City of Nashua. They were able to provide the capital to finance the projects, together with a lender investor, and our leading lender-investor partners, the New Hampshire Community Loan Fund, a nonprofit that invests in these, a wide array of programs. And the lender takes a very modest rate of return to cover their administrative costs. They share our mission of deploying more solar, and that makes these kinds of projects affordable, whereas if we were to go to the commercial solar investor market, the rates would simply be too high for the school district. We've tried that many times, and it just doesn't work in a state like New Hampshire, where there aren't any state incentives for solar. And so, a local impact investor would put up the capital to finance the arrays, they would own and operate them for at least five years. That means if, for some reason, a panel isn't producing the power it's supposed to, it's the investor's responsibility, and they contract with Revision Energy to do the operations and maintenance, to monitor the production, to make any repairs if those are needed. And then, as I said, after five years, the school district decides. It's an option that the investor guarantees to the school district. They decide whether they want a loan, or perhaps in tandem with the city, which I know is planning to purchase the city-owned solar, the facilities on city buildings. You could then choose whether you want to buy it out. If not in year six, maybe you wait till year 10 or 12, or even all the way through 25, which is the standard PPA term. Or should you choose not to buy it out? Even then, you could continue the PPA for another five or 10 years. Again, it's at the district's discretion. What that looks like in dollars and cents here is that, in order to build the arrays as proposed, the cost to the investor partner would be close to $700,000 for Dr. Crisp and 1 and 1/4 million for Fairgrounds. There would be no upfront cost to the district. Again, you're not owning the equipment, but buying the power from the solar array. The PPA rate, if you were to pair them together, would come to 8.75 cents. That's about 10% less than the current electric rates, when you take the supply rate plus the mandatory distribution and transmission charges that Eversource assesses for every kilowatt-hour that you purchase. And then, that rate would rise by 2% a year after year one, with, again, the option, as shown here in year six, to buy it out for 40% less than the initial purchase price, the initial installation price of just over 400,000 for Dr. Crisp or 750-odd thousand for Fairgrounds. If you deferred, waited until, say, year eight or 10, that amount, which is pegged to fair market value, according to IRS rules, would decline each year, as the fair market value declines. And the PPA contract, which we would present if the Board elected to move forward, would stipulate what that buyout amount is each year after, starting year six. When we factor in that cost to buy out, if the city, if the district chose to buy it out, we also factor in the cost of an operations and maintenance contract, if you were to continue that for peace of mind throughout the duration of your ownership. And we factor in a modest degradation, that is, the panels put out roughly half a percent less per year than they do in year one. We factor in the cost of replacing the inverters, that's the one component that you will need to replace roughly midway through the system life. So we build all of these factors in. Your net savings, based on federal government projections of what will happen to grid electricity if you were buying power from the grid instead of producing it yourself, the net savings from Dr. Crisp would be about 645,000 over the 25-year warranty period, or about 1 and 1/4 million at Fairgrounds. Or if you carry it out to the commercial lifespan, that is, 40 years for the equipment, Dr. Crisp would be about 1 and 3/4 million, and Fairgrounds about 3 and 1/4 million. And just finally, to show those numbers graphically, this compares in yellow, the PPA option, where no capital cost, modest initial savings, then a buyout, if you so chose, in year six, and then from year six to year 13, so roughly seven years can be considered your payback. That's when you're recouping the investment, the amount that you spent to buy it out, and then after year 13, the savings, the net savings accumulate. If you compare that to the blue line, this is if you were to purchase it upfront, without being able to access the tax incentives, you would then have a large upfront cost, and it would take about 15 years to recoup that investment. And likewise, for Fairgrounds, a similar trend, just somewhat larger numbers. The final number that I'll show here is the long-term cost. One reason we find a lot of cities and schools choose to go solar is that, of the countless items in your budget, many of them are not all that predictable. Electricity from the grid is one that isn't very predictable. Typically, you'll enter into a supply contract for anywhere from two to four years, but then you're negotiating again after that. And that's just for the electricity supply, the delivery charges. If you look at your home electric bill, you'll see there's about five other charges, which are whatever Eversource puts on them with PUC oversight. Those are rising recently at rates of between 3 and 5% a year. This is one way in which you can significantly control that, and in a sense, hedge, know what your future cost is. And because, at the end of the day, the sun keeps shining, or if it doesn't, we've got bigger problems, but we're supposed to have about 6 billion more years of sunlight before we all are blown to smithereens. Knowing that the sun will shine, we can, by harnessing that free solar energy, by owning the array long-term, and of course, building in the cost of O&amp;M and the degradation of the panels, your long-term cost of solar comes to just under 5 cents per kilowatt-hour, compared to a current price of just under 10 cents per kilowatt-hour, and a projected future price, if we take the government inflation projection for electricity in New England, of a little over 16 cents. So for that electricity, not all 17 schools, but the two that we're talking about, you would be locking in a much lower long-term rate of electricity. And let me just close, and then, of course, take any questions you may have, but part of what motivates my company, as an employee-owned company, that frankly, the largest challenge we faced to meeting the demand we see around New Hampshire and in neighboring states, is the ability to hire enough young people to enter the trades. And we love partnering with school systems, especially when there may be opportunities to provide educational programming. We work with, at Dover High School, their Career Technical Center, providing electrical training modules. We love coming in and working with individual teachers or helping develop curriculum, whatever you wish. It's, of course, your decision whether and to what extent you want us to be involved. But we see that as often a win-win, where we can interest students in this, what is actually the fastest-growing job in the United States, solar installer, about 1/4 million jobs so far. We love to provide monitoring tools, where you can perhaps have a display showing the power that's being produced and the environmental benefits resulting from it. Plenty of STEM applications of that, ribbon cuttings and things like that. And then, needless to say, I know a lot of students in these schools are concerned about the future and active on environmental issues. The CO2 reduction benefits, the environmental benefits are also quite substantial. So thank you so much for the opportunity. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weeks. I appreciate you coming back again after the very lengthy presentation that you gave us last week at Finance. For anyone who would like to see that, it is on our website. I think we kept you here asking you questions for well over an hour last time, and you also supplied us with all of your PowerPoints and some financial tables after some ongoing questions that we had. And those are available on our website as well, linked to the Finance Operation Committee Minutes. So if anybody out there in TV land wants to look that up, please feel free to do so. Now, does anyone here on the board have outstanding questions after, I think this is our third presentation on this solar project? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Weeks, for coming back.
Thank you.
I was in touch with Mr. Fidette, and unfortunately, he could not give us the bond schedule, basically what I had asked for. And given, seeing the presentation again, which answered some of my questions, did this go out to bid, which the city bidded out, versus the school district, which I would think the school district would have done this, because it's a school project, but we're combining it with the city. But usually, the board and the district is autonomous from the rest of the city, so I'm surprised we didn't kind of do that. But in the presentation, I'm looking at the cost, operation, and maintenance, the factors, you know, as it gets older, panels. The midway through the life of the inverters, I would need to see all that with the bond schedule, because, again, this is going to be, when you start bonding it, you know, there's a cost that people think, oh, it's school, it's city, it's still a loan that has to be paid back, with the two schools coming online. I questioned about the savings the last time, when I started figuring everything out. Of course, my questions or concerns are six years on the buyout versus 10, 20, 30 years on the buyout, the warranty that's going to be there, how much width is going to cost for us to, you know, with maintenance, then after, it's the life of it, and what, anything new that comes out in the whole process? Do you upgrade for anything that's new that's going to come out? So I can't make a decision until I see all the spreadsheets that I've, that we've asked Mr. Fidette, and I want to see all of this together for me to be able to make a sound decision, whether or not this is really cost-effective, or it's not going to be cost-effective. But I thank you for showing us all of this again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Needless to say, I'd be happy to supply additional information. One additional piece that may or may not be in your packet was our statement of qualifications, which was substantially similar to the very lengthy RFP response we submitted to the city. And that did include a number of other similar projects. And we, of course, invite you to contact those listed referees to determine if indeed they've had the experience that they've told us they've had. But I appreciate your questions, and we'll be glad to continue working with you and anyone else.
Hold on, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Brown, please, go ahead.
Hello, I'd like to hop in.
Oops. Is it, it's not?
I think it's on.
I just, I'm really bad at talking into the microphone, like we established last time.
Okay. So try and look at the microphone and not at me. That might help.
I just wanted to hop in and talk about the bonding process. So the reason why Dave Fedett wasn't able to come up with some of those spreadsheets is because it's so far out. Six years is a little far out to figure out what interest rates you would have to be able to bond out the project. Because right now, interest rates are very low versus in six years, they might be a little bit higher. So it's hard to come up with those tables and tell someone definitely, these are the numbers that you're going to have. But that's something that happens with everything, with buying a house or investing in something you don't know what your interest rates are going to be. But if interest rates stay where they are right now, or if they even go a little bit higher, we would be paying less on that bond rate than we would be paying for electricity. We pay about 60 grand a year for Dr. Crisp for electricity. And, let me look it up to confirm, if I don't give misinformation, we pay about $116,000 every year for electricity at Fairgrounds Elementary. So in those first five years of paying the investor for our electric, we'd be paying less than that. So there's a savings there. And if we were to bond out this project, we would still be paying less for the bond than we would be paying for electricity. So there would still be a savings. And also, we would get money back from selling our renewable energy credits from the solar panels, as well as money back from excess energy generation, which we should have since the panels or the systems are sized larger than the actual amount of electricity that we use. And as we improve our energy efficiency projects, our energy use in those buildings should also decrease. So there's that as well. And we'd still be selling the energy back to the grid. Also, these panels help with our resiliency in these schools because we'll be establishing a rate, a lower rate, for a longer period of time that we will be paying for energy as the energy market progresses to higher prices. There is no prediction that electricity rates are going to decrease over the next 40 years. They're only going to get higher unless something big happens or something changes. So this will be helping these schools lock into a lower rate and helping our future generations that are in these schools right now have lower rates and have lower taxes if they stay in Nashua. We'll be helping them out a little bit. Also, it's solar panels for a school. So these are, this is the generation that's extremely concerned about climate change. And this is a way that the schools can make a statement and say, we are caring about the climate and wanting to reduce our carbon footprint because we have these solar panels that are supplying us with a renewable energy source. And sorry for the rambling. I'm just extremely passionate about this project.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. And go ahead, please, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a question about the history. And I don't know if Mr. Weeks knows this, but someone in administration might know this. Because you mentioned that there were solar panels at one time on Dr. Crisp. I was just wondering what kind of solar panels they were, if they were photovoltaic, if they were similar to what we're putting on now, and how long they were there, and what, I know, and why they're not there anymore. I don't know if...
I'm looking at Sean Smith. I believe they were solar thermal, which was a hot water system.
Okay.
Installed in the '70s, if I recall right. So the first generation of solar was primarily thermal or hot water. And our company installed many of those systems, beginning in the '80s and '90s and early 2000s. Since then, we've transitioned as basically the cost of solar photovoltaics, solar electricity has come down about 70% in the last decade. That is now the dominant form. And so you saw with those thermal systems, unlike the photovoltaics, which have no moving parts, those are plumbing systems. And they do require substantially more maintenance. And so never, we never saw projections of 30, 40-year commercial lifespans. Whereas with the earliest solar photovoltaics in this country, which were also installed in the '70s, the National Renewable Energy Labs has studied their output over time. And we still find 40-year-old systems putting out about 80% of the power they did in year one, which corresponds to that half a percent per year degradation factor that we build in.
Okay. And those were attached to the, because these are not attached, but those others are probably attached.
Those were. And they were at a higher pitch and quite a bit heavier in the sections that they were attached to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Ziem.
I have a similar concern to Mrs. Johnson. When we were talking at Budget last week, we were also discussing about the bonding that I'm concerned. I think her point is very valid, that I am simplistic. I admit that I'm not, I may not be the smartest bob on the block, but I do know that there's a limit to how much anybody can borrow at a given time. And we have humongous construction costs coming up. And so I think seeing this bonding schedule would give me personal reassurance that we could manage all these balls in the air at the same time. And that, so I am, I have to agree with Mrs. Johnson with that concern. Having said that, obviously, solar is a good thing, and I'm not opposed to solar, but I would like to see, I agree with Mrs. Johnson on seeing the scheduling. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can make just a quick response, and thank you very much, Ms. Ziem. The, as I noted earlier, the buyout is optional. And we often find for a municipality or school district, that's a critical factor because you don't want to obligate yourselves or a future board to incur this fairly substantial six-figure capital cost. And so I just returned to one of the slides that I briefly touched on. The second bar from left is the full-term PPA in dark blue. So you can think of this as your worst-case scenario, where the school district decides never or is never in a position to bond and buy out the arrays. Instead, you just purchase the electricity under the PPA. And then after 25 or even 35 years, you acquire it for pennies on the dollar and can continue generating power. In that case, the long-term cost of energy is still a bit lower than the current rate and about half the projected rate, based on the government data. So I do not, in any way, want to minimize your question. And I, we would be glad to work with the city and the Bonding Department to help with any financial analysis. But I just wanted to ensure that the board understands you're not obligating yourselves or a future board to buy it out. And if you chose not to buy it, you would still see savings.
So it sounds like the vote that we would be taking this evening would be, or the next meeting, but I would suggest perhaps this evening, would be on whether or not to go forward with the installation of the panels under the PPA. And then whoever's on the board five years from now would then undertake a vote on whether or not to purchase the solar panels at that point. Is that correct?
That is correct. What we see in almost every case with the school district or municipality is that the governing body, the school board, would authorize the administration, the superintendent ultimately, to negotiate and execute a power purchase agreement. And that PPA agreement would not, at any point, obligate the school district to buy the array. So there's no capital cost incurred. And the PPA stipulates that it will be at the discretion of the board and superintendent operating under the board's direction to advise the investor in five years, or in eight or 10, or however many years, if they wish to buy it out. And they're expected to do so at the beginning of the year in which they plan to exercise the option. So again, a vote now, based on regular experience, would be to authorize the superintendent to negotiate such a PPA.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm not going to support this because I've asked for information. We don't know what the rates are going to be with the electricity. You could say it's going to go up, it can go down. We're now producing more of our own oil out than importing now. And the fact that, I'd like to see projections. You can run what the current rate is, and you can run what an expected rate's going to be out five years, six years, 10 years. But, you know, coming on the board, seeing this, still have unanswered questions. And like I said the other night, my first priority is for the students, to make sure the students have what they need. Second priority is that I have to answer to my constituents who voted for me, and I've got to make sure that we can afford a project. And I don't know if we can because I don't have all the numbers. It's just like, if you went to get your own loan, would you just say, well, it looks good? Is it on paper? But you'd want to see all the numbers run to make sure that you can afford this loan now and in two to three years from now. And I don't have all that information. It, you know, everything sounds good on paper until when you get the bill, and then all of a sudden, you say, I can't really afford this. You know, there's insurance costs, there's buying-out costs, whether to buy, not to buy. You know, I'm just not 100% convinced on this. And I think we're trying to rush this through because we're talking about a deadline for March. We want to get this done by March. Everything's a rush, rather than having all the numbers in front of us. So I will not support this tonight. So you can take the vote, but my vote's going to be...
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I would like to point out that we have had this presentation three times, in October and last week and again tonight. So all of that is available on the website for anyone to watch at any time that is convenient for them. Ms. Brown?
I was curious about the proposal for Fairgrounds Middle School, since we are going to be doing some structural renovations there, pretty substantial ones. Are these projected for the new floor plan or for the current?
Great question. So we were advised by the administration that the renovations will be all interior and wouldn't affect the available roof surface, although I understand there may be an addition which would add some roof space. We have actually designed it. I can show you just again the site map here. We are not taking up every square inch of the roof. You see, for instance, in the upper right-hand corner, we're not proposing to use that. Without getting too much into the kind of regulatory weeds, we are capping this at a size 650 kilowatts DC or just under 500 AC, which avoids the need for an additional $100,000 in Eversource expenses when we interconnect a larger system. And so for that reason, we know the roof is new, and what is there will not change. There will be some additional opportunities. But to use additional space would incur too much of a fixed cost to justify the added panels.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Just one more. And also, if we install them now, and then in five years from now, we decide that we don't want to do the buyout, is there a cost for removal of the solar panels if we choose we want to go a different direction?
Great question. So the PPA contract is a standard 25-year term. And the commitment in that contract is that you will either purchase the electricity from the panels for 25 years or purchase the system, the panels, et cetera, within that 25 years. So if after five years you weren't opting to buy it out, you would simply continue purchasing the electricity from the array. If you did want to remove the panels prior to the 25 years, there would be an added cost.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add one more.
Yes, please, go ahead, Ms. Brown. This is confusing.
So during that, five years are the time that we do not purchase that array out, even if it's 25 years. You can tell me if I'm wrong, but the investor will be responsible for keeping up and maintaining those panels. So we would not incur any of the responsibility or the cost to maintaining the system.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Ziem.
I apologize. I admit that I'm Johnny-come lately on this. And so I have not seen any of the backup. This is, as you all know, this, there are new board members, and I'm not on that committee. And I probably should have gone to those meetings, but I was in Florida, so. You'll forgive me if I chose this.
Money material, I know.
If I chose the sun instead.
Money responsibilities, I understand.
But it puts me in the position where I have to agree with Mrs. Johnson because I go again to the bond scheduling. It's going to take us a while to get the construction loans going. And I know in my own financing, which is admittedly much smaller than the city's, but I have a spending ceiling. And I have to believe the city has one, too. Hopefully, it's a lot larger than mine. But having said that, not knowing what it is and not knowing how it will, I have to say that if it is voted on tonight, you can count me as an abstain, or you can count me as a no, either you choose. But I will not be voting for it tonight because I don't feel like I have, I don't feel like I have the knowledge. I feel I need to be comfortable voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ziem. Ms. Brown?
I would like to maybe, not formally making this motion, but maybe if I can recommend a nation, that we table this till next meeting. I don't feel like we need another presentation because I think you've done a fantastic job and answered a plethora of questions. However, I think it is important for several members of the board to have that bond schedule. We asked for it for another reason as well in a Budget Committee meeting last night, or a few nights ago. So I think if we're going to be getting that, we can make a really informed decision. Because I think that probably most people are going to choose in the affirmative once we see that the numbers work out correctly. So it would be my recommendation that maybe we consider voting on it next month, which I know does stretch out the schedule, the potential for installation. But it is only one more month, and we do have a lot of new board members.
Okay. So, oh, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
So this doesn't necessarily have to do with the schools, but I'm wondering if there's going to be a cost to residents in Nashua because Eversource, if we were to say yes to this, if they were taking such a huge cut, are they going to somehow try to farm out, recouping those costs with the rest of us?
Fair question. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. The answer is no. And without going into too much of a dissertation on the way in which net metering works in New Hampshire, Eversource pays for the excess kilowatt hours that would not be used in either school but essentially delivered to the neighborhoods, is at current rates a little under nine cents per kilowatt hour, which is actually about half of what they charge all of those homes for. We pay about 18 cents per kilowatt hour on our home electric bills. So we're actually helping the utility, which hopefully redounds to all of our mutual benefit in some indirect way. But they will be selling those units of electricity at a premium every time they exit the school. It would be nice if we could recoup more of that value. That's the way net metering is structured today.
Okay.
I would like to add for that.
Go ahead.
So also, with those panels on the roof, remember how Dan told you they would also power the neighborhood? They would also help with demand response, which I'm not going to go down the rabbit hole and get into it completely. But sometimes the grid is almost, too much power is needed, too much demand, and we do not have enough energy to meet that demand, or you have to use more. Having those panels on the roof, especially if it's during peak capacity day, which happens in the summer, normally the hottest day of the year, those solar panels will help offset that energy and help bring some cost down for the community. So it also provides a benefit.
Okay, thank you. Please, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I like this, I like this proposal. And if we were to vote on it today, I would vote for it because I know what it's going to cost the city and the school district. It's going to cost the city and the school district $0. It's going to cost us $0 today. In five years, it'll cost us $0. I understand that some members want to look at the schedule for bonding, and I understand that. But even if we were, in five years, in a problem with bonding, that we don't have to actually buy it at that time. We could put it off. I think we have a 25-year period. And from what I understand, there are photovoltaic cells that are operating for 40 years, according to what Mr. Weeks says. And I think it's a good idea. And that's where I stand on it. So if we were to vote on it tonight, I have no problem saying yes.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I tend to agree with you. I'm just keeping an eye on the time, and I scheduled like 20 minutes for this discussion, and we're more than double that. So at this point, I'd like to ask that we make a motion or move on. And it looks like the options would be, I'm either looking for a motion to approve or to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a PPA with Mr. Weeks's company, or I'm looking for a motion to table this until we receive the information requested by Ms. Johnson. Okay, I, gosh, there's a lot of hands.
Go ahead.
I think Ms. Timmins was the first one up.
I too agree with this solar panel. I am in favor of it. I've been watching a lot of stuff about solar paneling, and I'm going to put it on my house as well. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the revision of the energy presentation for Dr. Crisp. Crisp Elementary School. I think is that the one?
Okay. So the motion that was suggested was to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a PPA with revision energy to install solar on Dr. Crisp Elementary and Fairgrounds Middle School.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We have discussed it significantly. I think in this case we ought to do a roll call because it sounds like people are having different opinions. So when you're ready, Mr. Guarino?
Okay. On the motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate PPA for solar at Dr. Crisp, Ms. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Ziem?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio's not here. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
I have two noes and one, two, three, four, five, six yeses. Motion carries.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, Dr. Mosley, we just put the ball in your court. Mr. Weeks, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Oh, and Ms. Brown, she hasn't left yet, so we'll just continue to talk about her while she's sitting here. All right. I'm just going to do some undignified sliding. If someone could put the screen back up for me? Thank you. Just because I'm getting like a crick in my neck. Trying to see everybody.
Be careful, don't let it cut your head off.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Back to the agenda. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do any members, would any members like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion to approve the consentment agenda. Ms. Oden?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. So the motion to approve by Ms. Oden, seconded by Ms. Timmons. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no items removed. Does anyone have any communications outside the consent agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we have gotten to our first public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda. While Mr. Donovan goes and grabs that, does anyone have a comment related to the agenda? Okay, if you could state your name and your address or if you're an employee?
My name is Marilyn Todd and my address is 4 Greeley Street. I'm going to ask to revoke the rules so I can bring my children home and to speak now like you guys have done in the past meetings.
Okay, let me back up for a second. So your comments are not on the agenda, however, because you have your children here, you would like to not keep them up extraordinarily late.
Correct.
I can completely understand that. There's a number of parents and grandparents on this board and I know my kids need a very strict bedtime or else they're not pleasant in the morning. Does anyone have any opposition to letting Ms. Todd go ahead and give her comments now out of order so her children can go to bed on time? Well, not terribly late.
Three minutes.
All right. I don't see any objections. Ms. Todd, if you could please keep it as brief as possible?
Okay.
Given the lateness of the hour.
Okay. So I'm not very good at public speaking and so, so, "Good afternoon. I always taught my kids. The answer is always no unless you ask. So who better to ask what they not only want but what they need, my children themselves? I very proudly introduce to you my daughter Kylie Todd." Here you go. Who is a student.
I want more recess monitors because there's a lot going on outside and I want people to be safe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Todd.
All right. Thank you, Kylie. This is a proud mommy moment for me. So now Riley and Kylie, my daughters, I want you to take a good look at the people who are sitting around this table. I want you to, these are the people whose job it is to ensure your safety. It's not only their job, but they are the ones that can provide you an additional recess monitor to ensure your safety. Unfortunately, it is out of my control what happens to my children at school. But I do know one thing. My main job as their mother is to keep my children safe and unfortunately you're not allowing me to do my job, which means that you are also failing at your job. I'm not sure about this board, especially watching many of our, of your past meetings, but I take my job very seriously. Mr. Mosley, you and I had a pretty lengthy conversation earlier, but when I, but when I hung up, I couldn't help but realize the timing. I've called your office four times in the past two weeks and you called me the day of the school board meeting. Mr. Guarino, you stated in a meeting I watched that parents need to be persistent to make change and then the next sentence, you stated that there is zero tolerance. Unfortunately, Mr. Guarino, this does not make sense. Something that has zero tolerance shouldn't, shouldn't need persistence to make change. Zero tolerance means exactly that, zero tolerance. My oldest daughter is in second grade. Mind you, that means I have been a part of the school district for less than three years, but within that timeframe, I'm going to give you an overview on what my children have dealt with. In kindergarten, my daughter was threatened with another, another student stating his daddy was going to bring in a gun and shoot her daddy. The last major incident was less than two weeks ago. She was spit on. Yes, you heard that right, spit on by another student. Sorry. Frustrates me. In between the two years of those situations, I have dealt with my daughter being choked, throat punched, pushed more times than I can even count, kicked, punched in the face by a boy and even picking her up the first day of this school year with a pencil jab literally less than an inch from her eye. I would also like to mention 99% of these incidents have happened at recess. It is my understanding that recess monitors are allocated by the number of students. I agree, obviously, the number of students matter. However, it is naive for the only number of students to be taken into consideration when allocating recess monitors. Demographics matter. It is, it is not a coincidence that the two lowest-rated school, elementary schools are in the neighborhoods that are policed the heaviest. Why would we increase protection in these neighborhoods but not in the schools that these children attend? The elementary schools are the best way for this board to see where the Nashua school issues primarily are. Get these schools the resources and the help and guidance now before they join a much larger school. Your elementary schools tell you a lot more than any other Nashua school because there's obviously more, you know, so obvious, and, sorry. Your elementary schools tell you a lot more than any other Nashua schools will as there are much more of them than middle or high schools. This is an advantage for you guys. You should be looking at these elementary schools and seeing what the problems are now and how they can be addressed now and most likely will have less issues as they grow and get into a more congested school. The data is right in front of you. You can avoid some of these issues with the students when the students get into higher grades by addressing them earlier. And I just want to give you a little bit of background because I feel like that's kind of important so you know what I'm talking about. I was one of these, I was a problem child coming from, I went to, he said 17 Nashua schools. I went to six elementary schools in Nashua, I went to two junior highs and I went to both high schools, graduating from the first year from this high school. So I just want to let you know that, you know, I'm an accountant, right? So basically, you guys have this, you have all these elementary schools and you can see what the problems are in each elementary school and you can provide these students additional resources based off what's going on in these children's homes because obviously, you know, and, and the easiest way to say it is demographics matter. And, you know, I've, I've debated this with very many of people and it just, if the police are policing these neighborhoods more, where do you think these children are going to school? Like who, who's raising these children? The people, you know, and I'm not saying it's all, I'm obviously in this school district, you know? So I'm not saying all. I'm just saying statistics, facts, they are what they are. So if you take 10 kids from, let's just say, the best-rated school in New Hampshire, you take 10 kids from Wyndham and you take, you know, 10 kids from the worst-rated school, obviously, or the, you know, I mean, okay, so public speaking is not my issue, but I'm sure you guys get where I'm going with this. I mean, obviously demographics matter. My, I said, it is my understanding, sorry. My principal has taken the issue into his own hands and either having the teachers or pairs as recess monitors, although I appreciate that and like the solution, but feel as it should be, should be temporary until permanent recess monitor is hired. My reasoning is simple, morale matters. I've personally seen what these teachers have to deal with and asking them for additional duties with no incentive will obviously affect their morale. And the last thing we want these teachers to lose is exactly that, morale. My husband and I, over the past eight months, this will make, this will make our fourth Nashua board meeting. We have been to the historic board, zoning board and planning board. Before each board, we prepare ourselves by watching the, the public meetings. And to be honest with you, it's embarrassing to watch. I witnessed board members arguing and even calling other names due to light bulbs. This went on for a minimum of 20 minutes. The saddest part, you had two Nashua high students sitting there watching you. You are the board of education. You are supposed to not only be the example, but you're supposed to set the example. To the original board members, and this isn't for anybody new, I apologize for anybody new, to the original board members, you and anyone a part of the 20-plus hours of video I seen, you're lucky I'm not the mayor of Nashua. The only word I can call it is disgusting, honestly. I, I can assure you, the other three boards we went to, the members did, didn't always agree, however, they handled their disagreements while still remaining respectful to one another. I encourage you after this meeting to Google the Nashua School Board. It is full of, of news regarding restraining orders, people asking others to resign and just nothing but controversy. People on the ground over here, like it's just, Google it. Nothing good comes up of it. All this stuff is the very first thing because I wanted my facts here when, when I came here. And, and honestly, the first thing you do is you Google it and, and that's exactly what came up on Google. I believe you guys can do better and I believe Nashua deserves better. You know, I believe, I understand that there are future programs in the works such as recess reset and tactical task force, however, we need action now. I'm so sick of hearing about the future. What about the present? You stated you're stakeholders to these kids. As an accountant, I've never seen a stakeholder more worried about the future than the present. It all matters. It's all relevant. The biggest controversy I've had is using the term rating. If ratings don't matter, then why keep a score? Ratings directly affect Nashua's economy, especially school ratings. I am in the process of moving out of Nashua solely due to the school system and the fact if I want to, and the fact if I want to provide my children with a safe and happy education, my only option is to move. When I look at houses on Zillow, every, every house gives me a school rating based on which schools are in the district. Nashua averages a three. People are looking for houses in Nashua and they see these ratings. The whole community should care about these ratings and honestly, in my opinion, these ratings directly affect you and your job performance. If I was a member on this board, I can assure you, I would tirelessly, I would work tirelessly to make these schools better because obviously there's an issue and I'm better than a three. Threes or fours are not okay with me and never have and never will be. If there's a will, there's a way. I can assure you, if you genuinely want to make a difference, you not only can, but will, not tomorrow or the next day, but today. Someone in the school's administration said to me, "If you're so happy with the school, why don't you move to another school district?" Here's the thing, though, it would only avoid the problem until they went to middle school since it is my understanding from watching these meetings that the middle schools have significant issues. Also, I would like to mention, it is not a coincidence that they have the poorest ratings compared to the high school or elementary school, further proving my point that not only do ratings matter, but they are also reflective to the school's performance. The good news now, my school has potential. My principal and the rest of the administration wants to make this school the best. They need the resources. They, they required, they require the resources. My belief is giving the proper resources, all Nashua schools have potential. And I want to talk about, you know, my school, my children's school and, and the very first thing that they see, their, their playground, I'm sure you guys buy my address and you can Google my name, find out very easily where I live, right? So their playground is a parking lot. They have a parking lot for a playground. And two recess monitors, you have about 45 kids, I'm going to estimate, right? You have about 45 kids. So the, the problem with that is, is that one part of my school on the, drops down, right? So the recess monitors are telling these 45 kids, "Come back, come back, we can't see you" because in the fenced-in yard, right? In the fenced-in play yard. And so they're not able to look all around, you know? They're not able to see everything and things that they could see and prevent because there are, I, I have three kids and I couldn't imagine telling my, my, and I have told, I, I work from home, right? And I have a part, I have an office and the kids know they're not allowed to touch my part of the office. And I've, I've expressed this to them since they were babies and they, and guess what? Every now and then they still end up on my side of the, on the office. So I couldn't imagine having 45 kids saying, "Come back, come back," you know, and not being able to look at any, and not being able to address any other situations. Not only is, you know, and, and if we go back to the demographics, I was, you know, I, 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 so when I, when I went to the six elementary schools, Mount Pleasant, as I stated to you before, I, so Mount Pleasant, there was more kids like me, you know, angry about the parent situation and everything that was going on in my life, right? And then I graduated from Birch Hill because I moved in with my aunt, right? And there was, I was probably the only one at the whole school. So that's what I'm trying to explain to you, that I was this kid and I just needed a little bit of guidance. I needed a little bit of help. That's all I needed. I needed someone to show me that they cared about me because I didn't have parents that cared, right? So when, when these kids are going to school and they have a parking lot to play on, when they already don't have anything at their house, like, I don't want these kids in trouble that are doing this. I want them to have help because it is not just one kid. It's not a bully situation. It is the, the nature of the school. It's not a bully. So, you know, to be spit on, to, to, to talk about the gun situation, just all of that and, and these are not fourth graders. My daughters are six and seven years old. They're babies. I just allowed them to start going to school, you know? So I mean, all right, and to finish this up, sorry. So I think that these kids deserve something to look at that's beautiful and that they can play with. I think my school is the only school in the city of Nashua that doesn't have a swing. I loved swings when I was a kid. I couldn't even imagine, you know? And, and, you know, they have monkey bars, but I ask my children, every day I drop them off and I'm, I'm being honest with you, every single day that I drop my children off, I ask them not to play on the monkey bars. Do you want to know why I ask them not to play on the monkey bars? My biggest fear is that someone's going to push them. Someone's going to push them and they're going to fall off the monkey bars and they're going to hit their head and then I don't have a baby anymore. So yes, this, to, to, to other people, this might be a big issue, but this is the nature that is going into the junior highs and going into the high schools. And I'm telling you right now, if you guys don't start addressing it at the bottom, it's just going to keep getting worse because coming from a problem background, I never had to deal with any of these issues, ever.
Thank you, Ms. Todd.
I'm almost done.
Okay. I'm just keeping an eye on the time.
I know, I'm almost done. I, okay, I already kind of told you this. After watching many of these meetings, I heard continually from parents at the older schools was the lack of consequences. Kids need rules and regulations. They need consequences, either good or bad, for their behaviors. Speak about, like, for example, when I was in school and to, I graduated at this very school in 2003 and anybody who were to fight at this very school, you would automatically be arrested. And I was informed when doing all this research, research that, that you don't get arrested for fighting anymore, right? And, 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 and then I was told that it's up to the victim to decide if they want to press charges. I don't know if you guys remember, but that's kind of, to me, the only thing I can associate to that is domestic violence. When a wife and a husband get into an altercation and then the cops would come and then they would ask the wife if she... would ask the wife if she wanted to press charges, and obviously, the wife would say, no, 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 right? I don't want to get him in trouble. So, and not only are these kids, and so the only thing I can relate to that is, these kids are going to be like, oh, I'm going to get, I'm going to get made fun of because I ratted somebody out and I got him arrested. That's not fair for the victim to be put on. These 17, 16, 15-year-olds do not, they don't know what the end result of a consequence is. It wasn't until I was in my mid-20s, until I, I 100% realized the, the nature of consequences and how important they really are to developing kids, right? And, and it's not fair for a 16, 17-year-old to decide. And that's not reflective of the real world. Right now, in today's day and age, if a husband and wife get in a fight and there's an altercation, the, the wife has no choice, but, there's no choice. They don't ask. They're saying, you touched this woman, you're immediately arrested. And that's what happens. And I'm not just here for the high schools. And I was going to go on and, and, you know, take up the Nashville School District only because of the meetings, I was literally, I couldn't even believe, me and my husband, me and my husband watched him and we just sat in total disbelief, like, with what, what we were seeing in front of our eyes. And, you know, it is not just, you, you know, the meetings. And, and things need to start changing and they can't, and this, this task force, I, I, I watched an episode of, of the task force and it, it's going from today forward. And me and Mr. Mosley talked about this earlier. And the thing with that is, and, and when your boss comes to your work, you're on your best behavior, right? So to, to, to start today and seeing how these administrators are dealing with consequences and dealing with what's going on, doesn't make any sense. You should be using the past. These should all be documented incidences, right? So obviously, your report that we're going, as a taxpayer, we're going to pay probably millions of dollars for, because I can just imagine, right? Is not going to be reflective, because obviously, these people are going to be on their best behavior when addressing situations. The past should matter and the past should be taken into consideration. And honestly, the task force, I won't be living here by then. I want something for them to be safe now. I don't want to, to get another phone call that my daughter, my seven-year-old daughter was spit on, throat punched, punched in the face by a boy. I have a picture of her that I would like to pass around the room, the first day of school that I picked her up and literally right here in the corner of her eyes, she was jabbed with a pencil.
Okay. So Ms. Todd, I'm going to ask that you wrap it up. I understand that this is something that is extraordinarily painful for you to relate to us, but I also don't want to continue on this vein when you've already been in touch with Dr. Mosley, you're satisfied with your principal. So I think it's important for us to have the knowledge that you're giving us as we talk about budgeting, but our Board cannot micromanage what's going on in each individual school. Having said that-
Well, here's the deal with that, Ms. Raymond. Me and Mr. Mosley had a, we did have a discussion, however, the end result was he needs more funding.
Okay.
Right? And that is something that you guys can change. And I'm not asking you to micromanage. I'm asking you to make, your job, correct, is to make sure my children get home safe, correct? Would you, so is your definition of safe, ma'am, is, is your only definition of safe is that they come home alive, to me? It doesn't matter-
Excuse me, no, I think we're done with this conversation here. It is completely inappropriate for you to-
They're saying that I want you to micromanage. I don't want you to micromanage. I want you to protect my children.
Ms. Todd.
And stop fighting with everybody.
Okay.
Be professionals.
Yes, you especially.
Yeah, you especially. You interrupt, you degrade all these people. Don't sit here and start degrading me, because I will not allow it.
Ms. Todd.
So I'm going to sit here.
Excuse me, you have been speaking-
I'm going to sit here, no, I'm going to sit here, I'm going to sit here and I'm going to let you know one thing.
You, excuse me!
A 45 minutes about a solar power, but you can't hear about a six and a seven-year-old getting, um, beat up at school for no apparent reason? You don't see a problem with that, but you can listen to a 45-minute presentation about, about saving the environment, but you can't, you don't see, I brought my children in here today because they are very well-behaved little girls.
I see that.
They don't, they don't instigate anybody, they don't, my, every single time I have talked to the principal or anybody that has called me at that school, at that school, I, I, I'm all about solutions. What can we do to, to solve this problem? What, what, what can I do? And do you know that I, I begged, I begged to hear the answer, that there was something that I could do to, 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 to make this go away for them? I wish it was something that they were doing, because I can't do anything. You guys have my hands tied behind my back. There's nothing I can do. I am a taxpayer and I want my children safe, and that doesn't mean coming home alive. That means not having a, a, a pencil in her eye.
Ma'am, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I'm not going to get into this to you, with you on, during our public meeting. I, I don't know where you got that definition of coming home alive. I'm sorry that this has become such a painful experience for you, when you apparently just wanted to share with us that you think we need more funding for playground monitors and other supervision. I appreciate that, that's important feedback, but I'm not going to let you continue to yell at me or take up this Board's time with, um, long-winded explanations when you're talking about being solution-focused. At this point, you have now been speaking for 20 minutes, after you specifically asked to go early so your children could go to bed. I would like you to give the other people who have signed up for Public Comments an opportunity to speak this evening as well.
Well, I'm just letting you know that your job is to keep my children safe. That is your job.
Okay, thank you.
And so don't tell me that there's nothing you can do besides, you can't micromanage. You can do something.
All right. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay. I also have another person signed up for Public Comments this evening. Was that on an item related to this agenda?
No.
Was you, okay. Are you able to wait?
I can wait.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on. Dr. Mosley, it is time for the Superintendent comments.
Good evening, everyone. Couple things, I just wanted to thank the Assistant Superintendent, Garth McKinney, and Dr., excuse me, Donna Fitzpatrick, for putting on a wonderful professional development activity for our teachers today. I'm not going to cover all of it, because it was just so rich, but I'm just going to touch on a couple of things that happened today. Certainly, we had Carl Anderson come in and give a presentation on student writing and giving feedback. We had some grade-level institutions that happening around curriculum alignment, that's both vertical and horizontal. We had Professor Shamar come in. He is a president of the Center for Teaching and Learning of Mathematics at Framingham, Massachusetts, and Berkshire Mathematic, in mathematics in England, working with our teachers, understanding the nature of math content, learning characteristics of different learners. Our Guidance Counselors today participated in professional development focused on signs of suicide training and anxiety. Our paraprofessional, excuse me, our special education and other educators worked on children adolescents, serious emotional disorder. I'll just take a step back. A lot of these trainings and professional developments are tied to our Strategic Action Plan. We also had Roots and Wings come back and work with our faculty over at Penachuk and throughout the district around cultural competency. We're continuing our professional development around our website, and so we had some of our webmasters come in and continue that training. It was an eventful day. I wanted to thank the Assistant Superintendents for their work. There were some presenters we had on our staff who also did the Train the Trainer model. I wanted to thank the outside agencies that came in and provided the training, and I really appreciate all the work that they've done. On February 12th, Dan Donovan and myself, along with the other departments, we continued having discussions around healthcare, different ways in which we can be creative and solution-focused on how to reduce those costs. What was very, very clear to us is that I think there's an educational piece and we're still going to try to roll that out through our faculty around what is the best plan for them in terms of savings for their families and for their needs. So that's an ongoing discussion that we continue to have. I don't, this, this past week was a really nice ceremony. I think we put some things out on Twitter. It was called Hero Day at New Cereals. We had some of our kids come in, heroes in the community. We had the police, the fire, and administrators there, just to greet the kids. There are heroes that come in. It's a pretty cool event, and I really appreciate the people that participated in the Heroes event. We're coming to four more days before break, so I wanted to wish all of the kids a very safe and happy break as we start to move into the month of March, which can be long and protracted for some of us, because it's the long stretch before our next weekend. We are jam-packed. I encourage all of our community members to stay focused and tune into our budget process. Tomorrow, we're going to be going through our budget as, through our departments, talking about our needs and priorities. It's never easy to decide which, what gets funded or what human capital that we're going to look to fund, but also, we like to do this in a judicious and prudent way to allow us to make good decisions. So we're going to continue with the budget process and we're going to continue to have those, those presentations to the Board, but also to the public, too. I think it's important that you know who, who and what we do and what we're going to be focused on. That's all I have. It's been quite a, a, a winter. I say this, I really mean this, I'm a little happy that March is here. There's no more snow days, I hope. I can't get them all, but we all got here safe. I, I know I'm going to jinx myself, someone's going to say, do you remember two years ago it snowed two feet? Yes, I do. And I, I didn't live in Nashville, but no one, but everyone tells me of 1997 when it snowed on April 1st. I got it. I'm just hoping and yes, praying there's no more snow days.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Mosley. Do we have any Board response to Superintendent's comments? I'll go around. Ms. Johnson?
Now, Dr. Mosley, when I was on the Board, it snowed in May, when we were doing budgets, so I remembered the flakes. So we just pray now that we had an easy winter and we just let it go.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Zeeem?
And, and obviously, it's the hardest decision that you have to make as Superintendent, because I'm convinced that no matter which way you go, somebody is unhappy. It is a no-win boat.
Worst part of the job.
I, I, I can always say, unfortunately, I'm happy it's you and not me. And with that having been said, I would like to ask you, tomorrow, they're saying, we're going to have some bad weather. Starting at 10 o'clock, we're going to have very heavy snowfall. I, I cannot drive in bad weather. I, I tell you, and I, I really don't want to miss, so I'm putting in my vote, if it's bad weather, please err on the side of us old folk that can't drive with a bad eye.
I'll try.
Thank you. But I won't get mad, whatever you decide. I promise.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. Ms. Bishop, do you have a response to Superintendent's comments?
Well, to Ms. Zeeem, I hear if you flush an ice cube and put a spoon under your pillow and throw some pepper, you will definitely get a snow day.
Okay. Please don't do that. Mr. Corrino, do you have a response to Dr. Mosley?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, great. Ms. Brown? Ms. Timmons?
I'm good.
Ms. Oden? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. It sounds like there were some great professional development today. I'm really excited to hear about some of the social-emotional learning stuff, some of the behavior management techniques that our teachers and staff can hopefully utilize in their classrooms, as we're seeing children with more extreme behaviors than we have in the past.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Student Member of the Board comments. Welcome, Mr. Norris. Did you have a comment this evening?
Yes. So I had a couple of specific comments, just on the dress code that was getting circulated last meeting. So we actually talked to the administration and with a bunch of group, a group of students in our school that worked to try to improve a bunch of aspects of the school. So we didn't really come to a consensus on what we thought would be the best option, but we just kind of highlighted a few things that I thought would be kind of important to know. So Mr. Burns actually highlighted that guys in our school actually get dress-coded more than girls do. So I'm not really sure what we do with that information, but just kind of interesting, because I think it was, most people are under the assertion that it was actually the opposite. And then, onto hats and pajamas. So in my opinion, and from the opinion of probably 90% of the students, we don't think hats and pajamas tend to disrupt the learning environment at all. I see the idea that we're trying to prepare our students for the real world, but we're also trying to give these students the necessary skills, and I don't think hats and pajamas necessarily take away from those skills. And also, another problem, there's not really a set definition of pajamas where we can necessarily take away. So if, if you want to ban pajamas, you could either go buying them in the sleep department, you wear them to bed, but then that creates a lot of loopholes. I think that if the Board wanted to, in turn, actually ban pajamas, they'd have to create a set definition. Because, like, is there really necessarily a difference between a pair of fleece pajama pants and a pair of sweatpants? Just trying to get no more, no loopholes, if that's the direction the Board wanted to go in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Gao?
I just wanted to add on to a bit about the whole dress code thing. So actually, a few weeks ago, a petition started at South to allow students to wear So right now, there's 203 signatures, since the time I checked, which is actually pretty significant. Being someone who's like, you know, tried to get stuff done in the school, I mean, 203 is a pretty good response rate, I would say. I just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention. Also, on the other end, with the Class Rank and GPA Task Force that the Board set out last year, we've broken up into subcommittees. I'm personally on the Survey Subcommittee. So what we're doing is we're putting out a survey to survey the parents, teachers, and students of both high schools to kind of measure the culture and the mental health regarding class rank at the schools. So by culture, I'm talking about, like, you know, is it unhealthy competition that the rank, the class rank inspires? Or is there, like, academic dishonesty that it encourages? Things like that. So is this just an update on that? And yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right. Committee on Budget. Mr. Corrino, do you have anything for us this evening?
I just want to mention that our last meeting, we had presentations on transportation, on our CTE program, and also on plant operations. That was our last meeting, so if people missed the meeting, you can still get it on videotape. Our next meeting will be tomorrow night here at 6:30 PM, and the discussion will be on the English Language Learner Program and also Special Education.
Okay. Unless we're snowed out, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, Committee on Policy. Ms. Bishop, what have you got for us this evening?
I have a couple of things for you tonight. We tabled a policy last session that we sat down and looked at again during our Subcommittee meeting, and there are three policies after it that will be rescinded if we accept this one. So hopefully, everybody got a chance to look at it. So I'm going to motion that we approve Proposed Policy EF in regards to food service management. If anybody has any questions or comments first.
I will second.
Okay. So the motion is to approve Proposed Policy EF. Did anyone have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving Policy EF, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
The three, I'll just do one at a time. EF takes over Policy 9130, Food Service Operations. So I am going to motion that we rescind Food Service Operations Policy Number 9130.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of rescinding Policy 9130, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
So the next one is a, was the recommendation to rescind Policy 9215, which again is absorbed into the new Policy EF. So I'm making a motion to rescind Policy 9215.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Zeeem. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed? Okay. Right along.
And the third one that is absorbed into policy EF is policy 9220, Financing the School Lunch and Milk Programs. I motion to rescind this policy as well.
Second.
Seconded again by Ms. Ziem. Okay. All those in favor of rescinding policy 9220, indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
And then, the next one is a recommendation to approve proposed policy EFC, the free and reduced price lunch as presented. And then, we will review, then we will look at the next policy, which is not redundant. So, I would make a motion to approve proposed policy EFC.
Second.
Okay. That was a second by Ms. Ziem?
No, you seconded it. You can't second your policy.
Sorry, I thought it was.
No, I.
Oh. Sounded like you said it.
I would second my own motion, though. That's the kind of person I am.
Okay.
My fault.
All right. So, the motion is to approve policy EFC, seconded by Ms. Ziem. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The next policy is policy 9210, objectives of the type A breakfast lunch and milk programs. This will be rescinded because it's absorbed into policy EFC. So, I motion to rescind policy, I keep wanting to say 90210, but it's 9210.
Second.
Okay. Me, too. All those in favor of rescinding policy 9210, indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right.
The next one has nothing to do with food. This has to do with approving policy JFABD, Admission of Homeless Students as Presented.
Did you have a motion?
I make a motion.
I make a motion.
Just a motion before you second.
I make a motion to approve policy JFABD, Admission of Homeless Students.
A second?
No, I second. Okay.
All right, Ms. Brown, beat you to it. Do we have any discussion regarding policy JFABD? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
And then, the second piece is a recommendation to approve the proposed policy JFBDR, which is the dispute resolution form that is attached to the original policy.
Okay.
Second.
Did you make a motion?
I'll say, I think I did, but I'll say it again. I make a motion to approve proposed policy JFABDR, which is the dispute resolution form that goes along with the Admission of Homeless Students policy.
Okay. And Ms. Ziem, do you seconded it?
I'm sorry, I fell asleep.
Any discussion regarding the form? No? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Do you have anything else for us this evening, Ms. Bishop?
No.
No?
I could keep talking.
I did, I did skip finance. We'll go back.
I'm good.
Okay. I skipped finance. Ms. Oden, I apologize, I don't know why I skipped finance.
No problem.
Ms. Raymond? The next policy meeting is March 3rd.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
What?
March 3rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
The Finance Committee spent most of the evening on the solar energy. I have one motion coming out of that, and it is the recommendation to accept and place on file the fiscal year 20.
You're not on the, you're not picking up on the microphone.
I know. Thank you, sorry. I move to recommend to accept and place on file the fiscal year 20 January Transfer Report as presented and accepted at the February 11, 2020 Finance and Operations Meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Johnson. Was there any discussion regarding the transfer report? No, seeing none. All those in favor, accepting and placing on file the fiscal year 20 January Transfer Report, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
Mr. Donovan, when is our next meeting? I didn't write that down, I'm sorry.
It's the second Tuesday in March, whatever that is.
Is it the 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
11th?
March 10th.
10th?
Thank you.
You're welcome. March 10th.
Okay. So, I'm just going to write that down, March 10th. Okay. The Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, do you have anything for us this evening, Ms. Brown?
We do not have anything to present this evening, but there I'm sure will be lots to talk about at our next meeting on March 9th.
Okay. I feel like these are coming right in a row next month.
Yeah, right.
All right. Ms. Timmons, the Committee on Human Resources, please.
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules as we met earlier today at 5:55. May I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Okay. The motion to suspend the rules, I'll second it. All those in favor of suspending the rules to consider this evening's HR items, committee items this evening, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Okay. The first thing we, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Director of Technology, Gregory Rodriguez, District Y for 2019, 2020 school year at annual salary of $95,555.
I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Ms. Oden. Did anyone have any discussion regarding this? No, I just wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Rodriguez. I think he's, I've been hearing great things about what he's been doing thus far in the department, and I'm really excited to see him get the new title. So, yeah, you should vote on it first. Yeah. Unless we vote no, but that's my opinion, you should all listen to it. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Ziem.
Just a quick question, am I to assume that when the committee recommends it, that means all of the committee members voted for?
It was 3 to 0 today. We all did vote for him.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving Mr. Rodriguez as the Director of Technology, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. See, congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Rodriguez. Secondly, I'd like to make a motion to approve Jacqueline Hackett, Director Guidance for the Nashville High School North for the 2019, 2020 school year at annual salary of $86,500.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding that recommendation? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving Ms. Hackett as the Director of Guidance at North? Yes.
Aye. What?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
Last but not least, you have a revised personnel recommendation to approve, I'd like a motion to approve that revised copy dated February 17, 2020.
A second.
Do you have any extras?
I think you are not a copy. I think we are short one.
Okay.
Dr. McKinney is handing over his revised copy.
Would anyone else like to look at it?
Oh, I've got it, never mind. I'll take it back.
For a minute.
Yes. Uh. No, I did not have the revised version, so thank you. Okay. Anybody else needed or didn't?
I have a question.
Ms. Johnson? Question, what's revised on this?
Okay, if you look at the previous ones that was in your packet, we had some addendums added on to the administrative recommendation and some other things that exactly was the add-ons, which was the guidance counselor, Director Guidance wasn't on the last one. So, that's the difference and. And teachers' retirement, right?
Yeah, there were.
There was quite a few of them. 23, yep, we counted them. So, that's the difference from what you had in your packet, that you got in your packet on Friday versus today.
Would you like to look at this one that Dr. McKinney loaned me? I'll hand it down.
I have it.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I do. I just wanted to know what was the difference. Thank you.
That's fair.
Anybody else? Okay. All those in favor of approving the revised personnel recommendations of February 17, 2020, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
Okay. Next meeting for HR Committee is March 18. Is that the next, yes, March 18.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Timmons. Okay. Do we have any liaison reports this evening?
Well, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Timmons, please go ahead.
Student Representative and I met on February the, come on, guys, correct me, 12th? Okay. We met February the 12th. Okay, who said that? You did. Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. We had a really good meeting. We discussed what they just said during this, this.
During their.
The session.
Okay.
And the next meeting will be on March 11, 2020. Did you tell your mom happy birthday for me?
Yes, I did. I was telling her about how you said it was like the magic birthday as well.
Yes.
She was really happy.
Okay.
All right. So, happy birthday to Josh Gao's mom, a little bit late.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else have any liaison reports? I don't think we've had a JS SBC since our last meeting.
And the next meeting has been moved next month.
Okay. So, the next JS SBC meeting will not be until.
It's March 26.
March 20 what?
26.
26.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. And we don't meet again for the Ed Council until some, I forget, in March as well. So, we'll have an update for the next meeting. Okay. Unfinished business. Let's see, Ms. Fitzpatrick, you had provided us all with an update regarding disciplinary information at the high schools.
Yes, and it's informational for the board because last year, the conversation took place that this is a semi-annual report that's provided to the school board. So, I reached out to my administrators and had them format the discipline reports the same way, and there'll be another one at the end of the school year, but it's just to give people an update of where we are with discipline at the secondary level.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. If I'm reading this right, this data, number of infractions per student, you've got 20 on the first, on Elm Street, 20 plus, the number of students is four?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, we're not picking up on the microphone.
It was asking of the speaker.
Okay. And then, you've got number of infractions per student, 10 to 19, 21, that have had 10 to 19 continuous infractions?
Yes.
Okay. As I'm looking through this, and you've got 3 to 5, 73 continuous infractions, and then you broke it down by individual race on the students as I went through this whole thing.
And part of the reason that we do that is because there was concern voiced last year that minority students were unfairly targeted in discipline.
So, can I ask a question? Continuous infractions, like one right, right after the other, or just total infractions?
There are four students, for example, Elm Street, there's four students that have 20 or more infractions, and it can be anything from being asked to leave the class to suspension for doing something that's a suspendable offense under JIC.
Okay. And that's, but it's, they're concrete, they're not, like, they come back and then they have it the same day, or we don't know. I thought Ms. Johnson said continuous infractions, and so I was confused.
There are students who will have an infraction, have the consequence for that infraction, and then the next day, it's possible for them to act out in another way, to get another infraction.
Okay. But we can't speak further due to student privacy?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, can I continue?
I apologize, Ms. Johnson.
That's okay. And it's clarification, because as I was reading this now, on the identifying, students identifying as Hispanic, count of Hispanic Latino, false and true. So, we don't have a true rating on that, that we don't know, because that's not in the, the individual students by race, that's a separate category. How come?
It's a federal government guideline.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
It's like that at the Department of Health and Human Services as well.
Mm-hmm.
And these are self-reports by the whoever fills out the form.
Correct.
So, like a parent or the student themselves, if they're older.
Okay. I just want to say that as I look through this, it's a little bit disturbing on this, which school is this? The second page over. Oh, Fairgrounds Middle School, thank you. That you've got 10 to 24 students, infractions, 10 to 24, 15 students, 6 to 9, 18 students, 3 to 5, 37. And as you kind of go through this, some of it gets better, but basically with those numbers, it's, you know, I was a little bit, not being on the board for a while and coming back and seeing this, I mean, this is something that we really should be seeing.
And I'll, I have two different responses. One is that because we've had change in administration and assistant principals, frankly, the reporting has gotten more accurate, and kids are being held to a higher standard, and consequences are happening more, which is why you're seeing higher numbers.
Well, I think consequences should come and should be held to the highest standard. And I'm going to ask the board, is there any way that we can, we've got the middle schools and the high schools, I'd like to see the elementary schools now, to see what's going on at the elementary schools. Because I think that as, even though the reporting is getting better, this is frightening. And I think that where, even though we don't micromanage, we need to see what's going on in the schools. So, this way, we know where we need to do funding if we, with the money that we have or don't have. So, I'm, thank you for this report.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Corrino, and then Ms. Bishop?
I'm sorry. Real quickly, I think the reason why Hispanic is separate is because the US Census, people who are Hispanic, they can identify as different races. So, that's why it kind of gets a little confusing there. That's why it's separated out. Am I on the right track?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Thank you for the clarification.
I was going to go off of what Ms. Johnson was saying. I think it's interesting to get these more accurate numbers, and then as we roll out the social emotional learning, to actually see the numbers go down and, you know, measurable results are always welcome additions to research.
I agree.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Norris.
I don't know if it was place and error, but do you know what ISS and OSS mean?
ISS is in-school suspension and OSS is out-of-school suspension.
Thank you.
Okay. Somebody who's never had ISS.
I'm just saying, Mr. Norris, you're a junior this year, Mr. Norris? Congratulations. All right. So, we are hearing consistently from our staff that our students are coming in with more intensive needs and, oh, I'm so sorry.
Ms. Brown and Dr. Mosley.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry to see you, Ms. Brown.
That's all right, that's all right. I need to wave more arms. All right, so I had two questions. One, do we, is it consistent through the schools what qualifies as a recordable offense? I mean, if your teacher has you stay after for detention, is that a, is that, like, a recordable disciplinary action? Or like stays for lunch to finish your math homework or something?
No.
Or is this like things that they've reported to police? Like, what is, what's the...
It has to do with office visits and consequences from an administrator. If a teacher keeps a student for lunch detention, they can record it in the log in X2, but it's not necessarily something that would be put in unless the administrator is the one that gives the lunch detention. But if a teacher says to a student, you need to come spend lunch with me, and that really is a restorative practice, so that's not a bad thing. They may not put it in as a disciplinary action. If it happens through the administration, then it is registered as a disciplinary action.
Okay. Okay, so does...
I have one more.
Oh, go ahead.
Unless you, were you going to add to that?
Yes, I'm wondering, so does this record office visits? If that is the consequences that you have to go to the principal, that's included in here? Whether the principal then gives, say, an additional consequence of lunch detention or not?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Brown?
And I was looking specifically at the statistics for the middle school level. So I found it really interesting that it looks like at Elm and Fairgrounds, there were right around 31, 32% of students with any kind of infraction. And then it's pretty significant drop at Penachuck at 24.8%. Do we think that is recording practices? Do we think it's about economic demographics? Is there any theory about why it's so consistent at two schools and so different at the third?
I think it's a combination of things, but demographics, it's also the smallest middle school.
Well, percentage-wise, though, I mean, that wouldn't make a difference. Do you think it's because there's just so many more kids? And is it classroom size? Is it...
Yes, I think that's one factor.
Dr. Mosley and then Ms. Zim.
I think, couple things. We've had some lengthy discussions over the last two years about behavior. I call it student engagement, discipline, what I, the arena to have that and our in-depth conversation. We have a behavioral task force that we've actually formed to have different stakeholders at the elementary school, middle school, and high schools come and have those discussions. Just want to clarify a couple of things. When we looked at the data, and I just want to be very clear about the language we're using, we found that there were kids who were disproportionately subject to our discipline policies and our practices. And that's not a negative infraction on our administrators or anything like that, it's just what it is. But part of this is, and it gets back to when we talked about budget development, talking about what Ms. Oden has talked about, and a little bit about, I'm not sure where it was coming from, from here. We have specialized programs in our elementary schools that project achievement that we don't necessarily have the supports at our middle schools. And thus, those kids are just thrown into the general population. So their behaviors and their challenges don't change because they're in the mainstream, they just manifest themselves in a different way. And thus, they're subject to the discipline code. And then subsequently, it kind of spirals out of control when they go through the middle schools and into the high schools. So the question is really about building supports and building structure around those kids. So for instance, in the budget, what we saw is that an additional assistant principal to help with that. We also saw a development of another, whatever we call, behavioral support program for our middle schools. That's not the end of that discussion, we still need to do more work on that. I know that the behavioral task force has looked at discipline consistently throughout the whole district. And believe it or not, it's more than a conversation here at a board meeting, it's certainly something that's going to take place in a long time. We have used variety of behavioral management or slash student engagement techniques in our elementary schools. And we're just trying to find the right one consistently and provide the training for our faculty to make sure that we give the kids the support.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Ms. Zim?
I'm not sure that this is the right place for my comment, but it seems that it's an ongoing conversation on the same subject. I guess I would like to know how much these recess monitors cost us. And I would also like to know if we have money in the budget this year left out, sometimes in the budget. And if you don't have that information tonight, I understand, and I will try to be patient and wait until it's convenient for you to have it. But do we have any, you know, they, year-to-date, we have, the budget was X dollars and we spent X minus or X plus. Do we, do we have, is it possible that we would have money to consider the, what sounded like an immediate need to me tonight? And, and I really want to say, I have a, we have a grandson. He is ADHD. And he is guilty of some of the abuses that we heard about tonight. It's not, it was through no fault of his own that he was born to, he was born to a drug mother. And those drugs affected his brain, and he has a processing problem. But it doesn't change the fact that our schools are dealing with these issues with these children. And they are, they are dangerous. Bad things do happen to good people. And so if we have enough money in the budget, and if the administration considered it a need, then I would certainly like to see us discuss it. If my placement of this discussion is in the wrong order of business, I apologize. And I certainly am not, I'm not making any arbitrary decisions. I am just saying that my heart does go out, as I'm sure all of us. I don't think there's a person in this room that couldn't identify with the sorrow you feel when your children are placed in jeopardy. And I think all of us have had that circumstance because our society unfortunately has wandered where it should not be. So I'll shut up and see what you all have to say about my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zim. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, I just want to elaborate with Ms. Zim. I don't know if it could go into the Finance Committee, if we can get an idea how much it costs for a monitor.
It sounds like budget and Mr. Donovan.
Is it budget or is it, does Mount Pleasant have anything in the discretionary fund for the end of the year, for now to the end?
Are we, excuse, just, if you're at, is the question about a priority, then we can have that discussion. There's so many other priorities even before you even came here. I mean, this is, this isn't, a couple of things. We have to be very careful about what's being said in public, about kids and discipline, and about administrators. We heard one perspective. There's a whole nother conversation to have about that. We have to look at this not as Mount Pleasant, but also as a district-wide piece. And so there are other priorities in the district that are, you know, not to say that this isn't important, but there's other things going on here that I don't feel comfortable talking about in public, it's just not appropriate. With that said, certainly there are priorities going on in the district that I could use more money. If we asked all of our principals right here, they would come up and tell you about three or four things that they could use right now. So we have to just be careful about what we're going to prioritize when this is broached at the board level, because otherwise, we could set precedence on that.
Ms. Freeman, I'd like to continue here, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, because, you know, I'm just going to say that I know there's discretionary funds and I know what gets transferred, I'm just going to leave it at that. But I'd like to, if we have to do a non-public and talk about stuff like this, if it's qualified under non-public, then I'd like to do that. You know, because, not saying tonight, but you know, it's, I agree with Mrs. Zim. You know, when parents come before us, we have to listen to one side of it here. We don't know the other side, so the other side, you know, and the problem is, if a parent wants to come before us and to hear the case, we have to be neutral all the time. So I don't want to get bogged down with this unless the parents want to, you know, it goes further where they take it to the top. But right now, if it's something that's pressing somewhere, then that's something that, what Dr. Mosley said, that we can't, we have to hear both sides of it, then we can't hear the other side in public. That's what I'm just saying here. Thank you.
I think we're in agreement, Ms. Johnson. It's very affecting on everyone when we have parents come and tell emotionally charged stories about what has happened to their children. We all have children and grandchildren, there's nobody here who doesn't on this board. So we all know what it's like to be worried about our kids. Having said that, we have to stick to our agenda to a certain extent. And if we want more information about things like that, the course of doing that would be to then send an email to myself or Dr. Mosley. And then we could ask, say, Mr. Donovan, you know, as part of the budget process, how much do these things cost, et cetera? But I don't think that it is appropriate for us to deviate from our set agenda of the business that the administration needs to get done this month to, unless there's a true emergency, to talk about what one parent has brought forth. When we have others who have emailed us, or we have other people who simply couldn't make it to a meeting to make a personal plea. So we have to be as fair as possible. Ms. Bishop?
So taking it out of the budget and taking it away from us and kind of back into the schools, I'm wondering, and I know Ms. Brown is really active in her PTA. I would much rather volunteer my time hanging out at recess and organizing games than photocopying. I think students say that, but it's the worst job ever. But I don't know if that's something that can be brought back into the schools as a parent-run activity and not necessarily a school board run.
I don't know. I would suggest our members to kind of think about this, percolate on the things that you hear tonight. And then in the coming days, tomorrow, the day after, email your thoughts on this to Dr. Mosley. And feel free to copy me as well, and I'll, you know, we'll see where the brainstorming that we each do comes to. Ms. Zim?
I just want to publicly state, we have the best administration in the world, barring none. I have the greatest respect for our teachers. I could sit here and tell you all the stories of the sacrifices our teachers make daily. And not to mention, Dr. Mosley, you all just saw how tactful he is. I think he was very tactful about what he had to say. And sometimes it's hard to say the things you need to say. So I would never want anybody to think that my intent was to diminish the respect that I hold for all of our administrators and all of our teachers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zim. All right, so I'm going to ask that we continue a discussion about student behavior data to perhaps a policy meeting and have Ms. Fitzpatrick get the requested information. And then I think JIC has been percolating around there, whether we need to talk about it again. Ms. Brown?
So what policy, or what, I'm sorry, what committee does this fall under?
It would fall under...
It kind of seems like there's some corrupt...
Right, I'm thinking JIC because JIC, I'm thinking policy because policy JIC is our student discipline policy. And it has a, it's like 13 pages long or something of all of the student behaviors that could result in an infraction. And so if we wanted to have a longer discussion about that, that would be the appropriate place. And I do know that the Behavioral Task Force is planning to report to the Policy Committee towards the end of the school year, I believe. So...
Certainly, and just so we're all clear, I encourage anyone to be a part of that. I also extended an invitation to parents as well, if they would like to do that. The more information and more participation, the better. This is a great opportunity to start having that dialogue.
Yep, and then in those, like, immediate cases, you know, the people who can do the most, the quickest, are the principal, then the assistant superintendents, and then the superintendent. So that's the kind of chain of discussion, of people who are boots-on-the-ground can make immediate changes for our kids. So, okay. The next item is a vaping survey update. This was really interesting reading, Ms. Fitzpatrick, thank you for including it. And this came from the Prevention Coalition?
It did.
Okay.
The, when we were talking about what we could do in the district level around vaping, we talked a lot about educating students. And so the health classes have been getting presentations from Breath New Hampshire. And that's under the Prevention Coalition, which I'm a member of as well. So I reached out to Cameo and she had said they had results, and I said, could you please send them to me because I know people are asking? And so this comes from them, but it's Nashua students in health classes that were surveyed.
In the high schools?
Yes.
Is there any plan to extend this into the middle schools?
Yes, it's a matter of scheduling.
Okay. All right, please keep us updated.
Okay.
Any comments or questions regarding this? Ms. Brown?
I would like to go on the record to say vaping's gross.
It's also very, very bad for your lungs. Okay. All right, so behavior, behavior. I would like to wait on the parent negotiation because it looks like we have another non-public regarding safety. If we could just do both of those at the end, any objections? No, I'm seeing everyone in agreement. So then we've had our presentation by revision energy. The last item before our public comments and our board comments and our non-publics, I guess it's the third to last item, is regarding the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Last year during our budget process, we had approved monies to join the New Hampshire School Boards Association for this school year. Well, this fiscal year, so it runs from July 1st to June 30th. I met with the Executive Director of the New Hampshire School Boards Association and Dr. Mosley last week. Barrett Christina is the Executive Director. And we discussed what could be done for this year, because this board had indicated a desire to go ahead and join, and a desire to talk to them about some policies. However, there's only a couple of months left in the fiscal year. So it was his recommendation that we wait until July to join if we put the monies in our budget for next year, which they are in the budget for next year. But he did offer a couple of things. One, to provide the dress code policy that Ms. Bishop had wanted to get a copy of their recommendations for her next policy meeting, so you should be getting that. He also offered to invite our members to their members-only new board member orientation session that they offer. The next available ones are May 5th and May 7th in Concord and Whitefield respectively. The cost for us to attend would be $85 a person. And as many or as few board members who want to can attend, but we do have to register before the end of April to let them know how many will be coming. The monies, if we decided to do this, would come from the money that we had set aside for joining them and doing some board member training. So, so, Ms. Timmons?
Valen, anything outside of May?
I have nothing before May that I saw. We can ask Ms. Kinsonella to keep looking if those dates don't work for people. But I told him that I would bring this to the board and see if there was any interest in attending any of this. I think with our discussions about governance and how the board and the administration work together, how we can work together effectively, it seemed like not a bad idea. Okay, Ms. Zim?
I did attend that new board 100 years ago, so I think it would be a way, I hope nobody will be offended if I abstain from that new member orientation and save the $85. We need 85, every 85 counts.
I agree, I agree. I also would simply say that this is, this is an invitation. No one is required to go. It starts at 5:30, so it may be logistically not possible for members to go. But I wanted to throw it out there because we have been talking quite a bit about how to work together and how to work effectively with administration. So if anybody is interested, please email me and Dr. Mosley, and we will let Mr. Christina know. Does anybody have other, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. If you guys could let me know by the end of next week, so two weeks, to know whether or not this works for you or if I need to find some more dates. If Tara finds some more, I'll have her email it out.
I definitely need a new date.
Okay. I'm going to write it down. All right, so the next item on the agenda is our second period of public comments regarding anything on the agenda or not. I do have Ashley Martin signed up. Did you still want to make a comment, Ms. Martin? Okay, please come on down.
Hi. I really don't like microphones, you guys. I'm Ashley Martin. I live at Brienne Drive, so right over the bridge, which is really good. Not bridge, but you know what I'm saying. So I am actually related to Maryland, but I'm not going to yell at anybody, because that's not why I'm here. I am really concerned about charter schools and how IEPs are being handled and how that is being told that it's not about the money.
I'm sorry, that it's not about what? I can't hear you.
The money, is that what, that's what I've been informed on the numerous times that I've tried to get information as to why we have decided we're going to be busing all of our students that are within charter schools who need IEP services. My son is autistic. He actually was pulled from Broad Street School in October of this year for bullying purposes, which kind of ties into what my cousin was talking about, where administration actually did not take it... actually did not take it seriously. And I had tried on numerous occasions to speak to the Special Education Department, the Special Education Director with no avail. I spent all summer long trying to figure out what was going on with that. All we kept going back was, it's not about money, it's not about money, it's what's best for all the kids, except an individualized education plan is based on the individual. So I'd like to know why it's all encompassed and how exactly this came about, because when I looked through the board meetings prior to the decision being basically thrown at us at the end of the school year, where I literally got on one sheet note, by the way, you're going to get a packet saying you need to sign for transportation, no explanation as to why this decision was made. Very concerning to me as a parent. My child has now gone five months without services, and I'm fighting to get services outside of school at this point, because it's now starting to affect his behavior. And as a concerned parent, not even taking bullying into aspects, just what is required to be given to him. And I've tried on numerous occasions yet again to get in contact, not to specifically Mr. Mosley, because I've always been told I need to talk to the Special Education Director, because she's the one that helps make these decisions. And I still am not getting any response, except for, it's not about the money, it's what's best for the children, but it's not what's best for my child, which is what an IEP is for. So I'm really concerned about this, that I'm not getting anywhere. And I basically have actually been told that it's my time that's being wasted, not hers or anybody else's, by fighting it. So I just am trying to figure out why, why? Like, because there's obviously reasons why I put him in a charter school. He started out in pre-K, so he's been in the public school, and I've chosen to take him out, because he doesn't understand bullying. And as we've seen with the middle schools and the high school numbers, bullying can be a problem. But I took action to take care of that problem that was best for him. And now I'm being told that he can't get what is rightfully his, because if I don't want to put him on a bus by himself to a school he doesn't know, that's my problem. And I just would like to understand how that's going to be addressed, because this is a big concern for me.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Mosley, could you please get Ms. Martin's contact information?
Just for the public, anything that's broached here, I can't respond to this, and it's just not appropriate, but certainly we'll have someone follow up with it.
Yeah, off-line to protect your child's privacy. But I definitely want to make sure that you two connect, so that, or you could even email. If you send me your information, I will forward it over to Dr. Mosley.
Well, that's why I figured if I brought it here, maybe somebody could tell me what I need to do, because every time I try and reach out to somebody at the district, I'm getting nowhere.
Okay.
Now, granted, I didn't go to Mr., Dr. Mosley, so I will give him that. He did not.
Okay. And we don't want to put anybody on the spot here.
Right.
However, since you came all this way and you waited, it seems like while you're both in the same room, could write down your phone number, so that he can get back to you during the working day.
Don't give a pop, don't say it now.
Not now.
Okay. I am not my child. That is something my child would have done, which is why he was left at home. Just saying. I just, I feel like it's something that should have been, like I said, I scoured these minutes to see when it may have been brought up, because it effectively is a budgetary thing, because you're now paying for buses to bus these students back and forth. And nowhere was it brought up in any of the presentations. I mean, a presentation was brought up about bringing in out of district. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand where this decision even came from or any of that. So I'm certainly willing to give my information, so that it can be a defusaken. But I do know I'm not the only one. And I would have been at an earlier one, but I have some medical issues, which we're not going to go into. But, so I couldn't be here at an earlier, prior months. This is the first one I've been eligible, able to actually make it to. So I just feel like it needs to be addressed as a whole for everybody, especially now that charter schools are gaining traction, that parents have the right to know this information. And when it's not readily available to us, why these decisions are made, it's really upsetting as a parent in the area.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. All right. Mr. Marku?
Mr. Marku. Marilyn Todd for Gurley Street. I would like to thank you, you three, very much for taking this seriously. And I'm sorry, Mrs. Raymond, that you do not take the fact that, you know, my child could have lost an eye the first day of school very serious, and that, that you don't find that, you know, imperative. I am also here, and I have been given permission by my school as support, just so you three know, that I was, the principal said that I could give my support, that he wants more recess monitors. I was given that permission to say that in this, in this meeting. I, you know, most people think I'm an investor in Nashua. That's why I went to all those boards. I just invested. I will be a Nashua taxpayer for the rest of my life. I will live here, I will always care about here. I was born and raised here. The only time I ever left is to join the military. I went to the Navy, and I, and I started, me and my husband's from Fort Lauderdale. We moved back to Nashua. We moved, we got married in Seattle in the Navy. We came back here. We decided to raise our family here, because this is my home. This is where I grew up. This is the place I love. I'm not here to degrade anybody, and I'm not here to condescend anybody. I'm here because we all know that after watching all these board meetings, the same issue comes to play, and we have the same people saying, that's not important. It's not important right now. We have much more important things to deal with. If the safety of your kids is not important, then what are you guys doing here? And that's my question to you. And Mrs. Raymond, after watching countless videos, countless videos of this, of this board meeting, the way that I see you interacting with these board members, like, you'll be like, Mrs. Johnson, it's the eyes, it's the attitude. I just, I just feel like you arguing with me earlier as a taxpayer and someone who is allowed to speak at these meetings is inappropriate. I'm entitled to my opinion. And if I want to bring it to this board because I like my principal and I had a conversation with Mr. Mosley, that doesn't mean that there's not an issue. And that, and if you got micromanaging from everything I said, then you weren't listening to me. You weren't. Because that's not what I asked you for. I did not ask you to micromanage my school. My school is doing a great job. They're doing everything that they can do. And I'm going to give you an example. So when I talked to my principal, and when I talked to him weekly, he stated to me, he said, let's reduce these classroom sizes. I'm sorry, I know your time is precious, but so is mine. And I will make sure that I come to every single meeting from now on, if you don't, if you don't take this serious. And I'm telling you, you can roll your eyes, and you can breathe all you want, you will not treat me like you treat your, that you treat these other people.
Nobody has rolled eyes at you this evening, ma'am.
So Mr., so Mr., so my school's principal, I'm not going to state names, after he reduced the playground size, I already told you that. Also, my, my children are one year apart, right? They're six and seven. And, you know, the, what I see this school doing is, I've seen papers about learning respect that I never saw the year before. My principal's doing everything in his power to make, to, the potential is there. I promise you, the potential's there. And, you know, you guys were talking about behavior, you know, and, and you guys were talking, you guys had a discussion about behavior. And, and like I said to you, being one of those kids that, that had behavioral issues all throughout my, my, my schooling, I'm telling you that if you address it earlier, it will get, it won't carry on, it won't keep going. It's, you know, it makes sense. I just needed one person to give me the guidance I needed, and I got that person at Nashua High. I'm an emancipated minor, and I talked to Mr. Mosley about this earlier. I'm an emancipated minor in the state of New Hampshire. I was forced to drop out of this school, well, Nashua South, because their school didn't exist yet, in my junior year. So I had a, somebody in the, in the office say to me, because I had to go to day school, night school, and summer school to graduate on time. When I was 18 years old, I went to day school, night school, and summer school to graduate on time with no, with no direction, with no parents, no nothing. And I just needed that one teacher to believe in me, that one person, because I couldn't afford to pay for night school, and there was no way to waive it. So what the teacher did is somehow, some way, I don't know if she paid for it, I think she paid for it for me. And that's what got me. And if I had that at elementary school, who knows? I wouldn't have probably needed it at that time. You know, alls I'm asking for is a better school district. I'm moving. I have five emails that I'm going to send to you board members after we leave here of my friends, because they're about the same ages as my kids, and their kids are about to go to these elementary schools, and they're dying to move. I have three friends that are actively looking for real estate right now, and it, like, right this very second. The school system is forcing contributed members of society out, and that's what's happening. And, you know, my kids, you guys sat here and watched them for a good hour, and they're very well-behaved kids. And they're going to leave the Nashua School District. They have to. In order for me to provide them a safe, happy environment, we have to move. That's all we can do. My friends, they're moving. Everybody, you know, what happens when we move? You know? And, and I'm going to, you know, end this, but I just want to let you guys know that I do love Nashua. I love Nashua a lot. And this is my home. And I, I went to good schools. I went to these schools, and they were great. And they're not the same. And I have faith, especially in you three, to be the change, you know, that, because I see you carrying it. And the elementary schools matter, because that's who are going to grow up and be in your high schools. So they matter.
Can I say something?
Oh, go ahead.
First off, I want to say thank you for coming and sharing all of this. And I know it's not easy, and I know it's, it's a scenario that we keep hearing over and over about. I do think we have different kids, we have a different environment that we're growing up in. I think your knowledge coming from the other kid's side is a great deal of information for us to have. I think us knowing what resources we have that we're working with provides us with some constraints. But when we have the input from you guys, we know where better to put our resources. So I do thank you for coming and sharing, and I know it can feel frustrating, and meetings are never fun for anybody.
Yeah.
But we are going to be addressing this kind of stuff in policy. I welcome you to come to that. Put in your two cents. Email me. I was also kind of a bratty kid, would get in trouble. Don't tell anybody. So I get what it's like, what you're talking about, knowing that you just need a bit of guidance and a bit of positive encouragement. I think that's the stuff that we need to share with the other parents that are not understanding that piece, which is what we're really trying to highlight in the social-emotional learning, is understanding that everybody comes from somewhere, incorporating that into the day, incorporating that into the teaching routine, is what we're trying to do. So you, what I hear is not just you advocating for your kids, but advocating for the other kids who just need that TLC. And I think when other parents hear this, they can understand why we're doing the social-emotional learning and why we're working so hard at every level in the schools to meet every kid's need. So, thank you. I hope you feel heard. I know it's frustrating, and we can't do everything at once, and it does feel like sometimes prioritizing means putting things aside. It's really how can we put everyone in a bigger bucket and get that bucket's needs met? So I really, I thank you for coming, and I, I like the cheering. You guys make a good team.
Thank you.
So hopefully, we can all work together and, and really get this district back to where you guys are comfortable. We obviously don't want people moving out. Zillow's insane.
Thank you.
So come, come to a policy meeting, share your input, email me.
I 100% will.
I welcome all that.
And thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it, because I'm just like, fuss, you know, like, just, just, it's frustrating, you know? And I do, I want to see, and you hit the head on the nail when you said that it's not just my kids. I really, really want to advocate, advocate for every single Nashua school, every single Nashua grade. I went to these schools, over 50% of them, as you guys heard. I love these schools, and I really, really just want to see Nashua succeed. And, you know, I'm very impressed with this board meeting today, I'm not going to lie. It's definitely way different than in the past, so I can appreciate that. And, you know, I have, I have good hopes for you guys, and thank you, you three especially. I appreciate that a lot.
You're welcome. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Good night. Thank you. Mr. Marku?
Adam Marku, Ford Jolory Lane, president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I have many things to say tonight. First, on the solar panel thing. The board voted on that without public comment, because you moved the order. And there wasn't anyone banging down the doors to talk about it. But I'm okay with moving the order, because we need to respect people's time and all that. But we don't get public comment at most committee meetings. And had I been smart enough to realize that budget's on the committee list, I could have talked about my budget concerns then. At the first hearing, public hearing, public comment session, guys, it's only Monday, and I'm already... What we heard tonight earlier from parents is not anything new to this board, although some of you are new to the board. It's not new since I've been president of the union for four years. It's not new when I was vice president of the union or a teacher at Charlotte Ave. Kids have changed, but our resources have not. The budget, I talked to the mayor, and I get it. We don't have any money for, well, we have money for things that, like boat ramps and cutting down trees around the river, and, and great, maybe those are funded some other way, not through the budget, but I don't know that. The people in the public don't know that. We're going to bond for a new middle school. I'm very excited by that. My two youngest children will go to that middle school. We don't have the resources right now. I'm asked, what are my priorities in the budget? I don't know. Because you can take everything in the budget and say, yes, we need that. There are a few exceptions that go around, and I'll wait for the public hearing in March for that. But there are not enough school psychologists, there are not enough ELL teachers, there are not enough special ed teachers, there are not enough guidance counselors, there are not enough Title I interventionists, there are not enough reading specialists, there are not enough teachers. And this isn't new. You've all heard this from me before, and I stopped saying it, and now here I am again. Because the budget's only so big, but we don't, we haven't had a board go down to City Hall and bang on the door yet. This board has been moving that direction, and we're grateful for that. And the superintendent continuously puts forward a budget that well exceeds the mayor's recommendation. And, and we get somewhere. But we're like spinning our wheels in the mud. You know, when your bike used to get stuck in the sand, and it would spin on training wheels, because I could still be on training wheels some days, and your wheel spins, but you don't move anywhere? That's what I feel like some days. Because the children don't change. The children have changed, but our staff hasn't. And we are bringing in a lot of good things. The SEL stuff, thank God we're bringing that in. But that's going to take time. And we're tracking the discipline better. And that's great. But I don't, I don't know what to tell my teachers and the staff anymore, when they have a school psychologist half a day out of the whole week, or there's no social worker. You know, I'm not going anywhere, sorry. You can, I hope I am, but I'm not. My three children are here, and I'm happy that they're here, and I'm happy to be a product of the school district too. And I don't know what else to do other than to go to the alderman and say, we need more money. Because, but people don't, it's not that people in the public don't care, they don't And no disrespect, unless you've taught, you don't fully understand either what, what it's like in the changes we've seen in these kids. So when budget comes tomorrow, and, and Bob and, and- So when budget comes tomorrow and, and Bob and, and...
Marcia.
Marcia, thank you. You knew where I was going. Come and they ask, like, can you double, like what they ask for, please? Triple it?
I'll get more, Doc.
Yes, but you and I will, but there are too many that won't. So that's what I had on the budget. This vaping problem we have, I got into a fight on Facebook today with some parents about it. My, the people I represent cannot be the primary enforcers of don't vape. Like, we can educate them, the Nashville Coalition, Prevention Coalition does a great job. Our health teachers do their thing. Ms. Brown said it was gross. Like, we tweet and reshare these stories about kids' lungs failing at 16 years old. TV shows are starting to make a big deal about them. But the public has got to take some responsibility for the children in this society and not just the people that work for the school district. I will not be blamed for not making a kid stop vaping because he's, because he's using a pen. Is this something that you can vape with or is it an ink pen? I don't know. So I'm glad that we're highlighting this. We, we do whatever we can to support the coalition in educating kids, but it's just, it was ironic that it was on the agenda and some parent picked a fight with me on Facebook. But to be fair, I was hiding behind the NTU logo, so. Listen, I'm hap, there are certain things, Dan, you know, that I'm happy to do battle with and, you know, defending my people is one of them, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marku. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Do we have any board members' comments this evening? Going around, I'll go this way instead. Dottie? I'm sorry, Ms. Odin. Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that as I look around this board, every member of this board have had children, have children in the school district or had children in the school district. And now some of them have grandchildren in the school district. So, so people in the, in the public should understand that everyone in this board, safety, school safety is important to every single one of us because we have children in the, in this district or had children in the district and have grandchildren in the district. So we take it very seriously. We take school safety very seriously. I just want everyone to know that. Everyone on this board takes school safety very seriously. Also, we're listening, listening to parents, we're listening to students, we're listening to the people of the city of Nashua. And as we continue our budget, we will articulate those needs. We hear, we heard a lot of needs for our district. We're going to articulate them to City Hall. That's what I, I fully expect to do. Whether it's more discipline, keeping our kids safe, or special needs, or language barriers that our kids need to overcome. But I just want people to know that, you know, we are listening and we will, we will go to City Hall and bang on the doors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bishop?
Two things. First off, obviously new to the board, I'm pretty sure my response back was not in the rules. And as we're supposed to be teaching kids rules and boundaries and regulations, I should probably also follow them. So in the future, I'll probably still talk. I talk at everything. But I think us mirroring what we want kids to do is important, so I apologize for speaking out of turn.
No. No problems. Ms. Seem?
Number one, the people who are here, the people who are listening, they need to understand that we do not control how much money we get. The mayor controls that and he comes under the purview of the alderman. If you know anybody that's an alderman or a mayor, or if you'd like to get to know them, we have just given you a tremendous cause to fight for. Because the reality is that they have mandated special education to the, we have 2,000 special education students. I have a special education student, so please know. My heart goes out to each and every one of them. But please do not mandate what you do not pay for. They are meant, we have 2,000 out of 13,000 and the last time I checked, one-sixth of our budget was going to those children. That would be all right if they were giving us that much more money to pay for it. They are not. Every year, our special education budget, I, I was 12 years, every year it went up about a million dollars, over a million dollars most years. And if you look at proportion, that tells you right there, the proportion is disproportionate. We have to prioritize our monies. And I would suggest to you that you can't get a Cadillac and pay for, for a bicycle. You can't do it. So please talk to the mayor, please talk to your alman, alderman, and please understand that we don't control. All we can do, the changes I was able to make in this budget in the 12 years that I sat in this seat were so marginal and so nominal. Once in a while, I was able to give a, a paraprofessional maybe a raise that made me feel really good. That's about the biggest thing, though, that I could have managed to accomplish. Because in the end, you can't spend money you don't have. Please talk to the alderman and the mayor and your federal delegation and your state, all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. 20 years ago, when I sat on the board, I asked a question about special ed, about the funding. And the federal government was supposed to bring it up and pay for all of special ed over the years. That didn't happen. They have all the money in the world in Washington to pay for what they want to pay. The thing is, we're autonomous from the rest of the city. So when the mayor says, "We get X amount of dollars," the only thing they can do is cut the bottom line, but they can't tell us where we can spend the money. That's the difference. I want to thank, you know, Ashley Martin and Mr. and Mrs. Todd for coming in tonight. Very informative. I've been around the school. I've known Ashley for a long time. She knows my, my grown children. My granddaughter isn't in school yet. She's only eight and a half months old. But it's very important what you've said to us tonight. And people have to understand how this budget works. 80% of the budget is for salaries and benefits. There isn't very much room after that, after we pay all our fixed costs. Salaries, benefit, utilities, those are the fixed costs. So when we have to try to move more or add to, there's not a lot to go with. But we're working on the budget now and we're going to see what happens with the budget. And then that's all I can say. We'll have to see where we go with the budget. As far as getting more money, ask the mayor that we don't need the Performing Arts Center, that we don't need to spend money on. You know, but, but that's, you know, when, I agree with Mr. Marku, which we don't agree a lot, but you're right, with the boat ramps and everything, you know, when you start chipping away at it, what does the city need really?
Well, I want to...
So, but anyway, thank you for coming.
I'll definitely be on the table.
Okay. So I think everyone has kind of hit the nail on the head with the budget. I do want to point out, as we're talking about budget stuff, that 80% of our funds do go to fixed costs, including salaries. But our teachers make very close to the lowest salaries in the state. So it's... Please stop yelling from the audience. It's not being picked up on the microphones. I'm not, I'm not going to respond to rudeness anymore this evening. I understand tensions run high when we're talking about our children, including those of us, including those of us who are mothers and have children at home right now who maybe need to contact mom when she's an hour late from her meeting. So, at this point, sir, if you continue to yell out from the audience, I will ask the police to remove you. Okay? Now.
Amendment one.
At this point, we would ordinarily adjourn. However, there are two matters on our budget that are for non-public.
I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public.
Okay. So we'll give one to Ms. Seem and a second to Ms. Timmons. All those in favor of going into non-public, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We are in non-public as of, oh goodness, 9:50 PM.